I call order the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. We will have the end gives the get the invocation and then we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
We thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right to deal fairly with all of our citizens. Give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The army called roll.
Sauter?
Here.
DeTillio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You've all received a copy of the January seventh, two thousand and twenty five City Council meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Reading of communications. We received four letters of interest interest for the open city council seat for the unexpired term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. And you have all received those communications and have have them referenced for you. We received the communications from Robert Tato, Jeff Baccio, Jeff Stoy, and Rob Hall. So we'll be discussing that matter at a later time. We have, I want to make you aware that we are going to submit a proclamation for America two fifty. Whether I just want to make you aware of that. And that'll be happening after tonight. We also received a copy of a letter from Fairfield Ruhr Tan Club to hold their annual antique car show on Sunday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five from noon to four P M. On South Main Street. We'll be we'll be discussing that matter at a later time as well. Reports of commissions and board. You received, you've all received a copy of the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. You've also received a copy of the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Minutes of January ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Did I say four?
No, you're right.
You're good.
Okay, well, I think you can make those mistakes into February.
I think you're on the way to September.
And you also received a copy of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Are there any questions or comments on any of those minutes we received? I do not have anyone that has made recognition to speak to counsel. The one that has asked for that opportunity, so we will not deal with that item now. Therefore, we'll move to the item nine, the manager's report, and the city manager's update and two thousand and twenty four city overview presentation. Lance?
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm gonna get a basically go over the my normal report, but it's gonna be very short and then we'll get right into the the presentation. So tonight on the under new business, we have placed legislation on the agenda for housekeeping items on the Firestone Pool Lifeguard Wage Ordinance and hourly full-time employees wage ordinance for the minimum wage things. We've also placed an update on the agreement with Attorney Hudson, and that'll be looked at later on after it'll be in under new business also. And we do have four letters of interest that that are already covered. So with that, we'll try to get into the two thousand and twenty four overview. We'll see how well this goes. Sometimes we crash and burn. Sometimes it works out great, so. You ready? Okay, can you go slideshow up top? There you go. So it's you're gonna see how much we got done and how much we've got to do. Don't want anybody having anxiety attack, but we've got a lot coming up, so. Okay, let's see here. So far, should be. Dan, can you advance it, please? So, you know, we're always talking about, you know, basically, it takes a village and these are all the people. It's about twenty people that, you know, have regular meetings. And we all try to, you know, have the we all try to row in one direction, but, you know, city council is important and planning commission, park and recreation, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Civil Service Commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals, I don't think we had maybe one meeting in two thousand and twenty three, and I think we had three last year. So it kind of varies, but all those people are very important to the community and, you know, have passion for Columbiana, so it's really nice. Bryce, how's that looking on the? Can you see it on there? Good. Go ahead. So we did a couple proclamations last year, one for Dick McBane and also one for Tom Makeel. And, you know, we did the fiftieth anniversary proclamation also. Okay. So this was a, you know, fun time for all the the people that was that were on the charter. And see in the lower right, we had a the mayor held a pre-event to the tree lighting. And as you know, they all came to council too, so it was a very nice event. So it's a ten thousand foot level. We we did in in the spring, we switched insurance carriers. It seemed to work. We just did a renewal January one, two thousand and twenty five, and we'll come up on a one-year mark in May. The we did purchase some property last year. We did closed on a piece of property that is next to the electric department, and we we store things there. We did implement the billing software, which took a couple years. We did ask Elevate Building Department to do our residential inspections. They had done the commercial and industrial the year before. We did have a Charter Review Commission and got through that. County line sewer assessment project finished up. And we named new Director of Finance Kevin Smith and also named Bryce Minor as Deputy City Administrator. Go ahead. So we've got some some kind of cool pictures here. The that's Garen and Rebecca. They were the council youth council reps that that were attended in twenty three, twenty four. I got a picture up there. I had went with Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber and got to stay in front of the White House, kind of cool. And Bryce came on board, and we had some ribbon cuttings throughout the year. So the next two slides, I always say, are my favorites. These are the grants that were announced last year. And I say that because they it's not the ones we process. That's not the ones that we were working on. It's the ones that we announced last year that came in between January twenty, January one and December thirty first. Seven million dollars of grants. And we really appreciate council and everybody working together to find those grants and and, you know, it's a lot of lot of things that we've got coming up. The highlight there with the first two, we have small cities congestion. That is, that's gonna occur. There's a slide later when it's gonna occur, but that's the road widening out in front of basically Wendy's all the way down to Bellaria. The Small Cities Project, one point three million, that is a project on, believe that one was Fairfield Avenue. But all of, I mean, basically, it's just a lot of different grants, and we try to count them all, you know, all the way down to a thousand dollars, all the way up to, you know, one point seven, so. We just kind of keep planting those seeds and, you know, hopefully they they pop on the ground. Go ahead, Dan. So since two thousand and fourteen, we brought in forty five million dollars in grants. Now, again, all those projects aren't they're not done yet. They may have been announced. Sometimes these grants, we announce them in one year and they won't occur for, you know, four years. But, you know, it's important for us to keep going and continue to concentrate on the infrastructure and various projects. This, the two thousand and twenty four is a big, big year. I think that my prediction is, I mean, although we'll we'll fill out grants, you know, as many as we can in two thousand and twenty five, but I don't foresee that that big a year, you know, coming up. Those were, we had a couple extra ones that we, you know, were able to get, and we have a slide later that shows those on there. And until we purge some of those out, it's unlikely that we're going to be awarded them just because they see, you know, our bandwidth is gonna be pretty full on some of these projects, but. So this was a pretty fun one. The first time we've got this grant, Bryce filled this out right when when he started, really, and and we were able to work with the youth on this and announce it at a football game. It was pretty fun. Kind of led into another grant that you're all familiar with that we did not get, but it was fun applying for it. These are the projects that we're doing that we've got basically on the horizon. This is a two-year thing. Basically, we started the first two already, so the raw water line is already in queue and it's coming along. And then we've got the lift station, the one that we're doing, and both of those will be done by spring. You know, so it's pretty big projects and, you know, that's about, yes, few million dollar worth of projects. I believe it's about five billion dollars worth of projects there alone, four to five. So that'll knock that down, but over the next couple of years, we've got about twenty five million dollars worth of projects to do. We did put Cochran in there, you know, that we're looking at that building, and we'll, you know, attack that project at the same time as we're doing the other ones. This spring, we're gonna be doing Knoll Drive. That's the ODOT project, Beverly Ray FEMA project. We're gonna be going out to bid probably in February, I'm guessing. Probably go out the Knoll Drive. We're gonna be doing a lot of advertising for these projects. I think Y and S project, that's another stormwater grant. Think that'll probably be about six months behind that Beverly Ray. Maybe 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 seven or eight months behind it. West Railroad Street, we're basically trying to find about another million, million seven for that project. And it may be some low interest loan, but we're working with the county right now to look for some basically some capstone financing as we did receive, you know, considerable amount of money for those projects, a million dollars from Jobs Ohio, as you can see. The Beverly Ray project, or excuse me, the Y and S project is gonna have to feather into a couple other projects. So we have a culvert replacement that we all applied. You're aware that we applied for OPWC grant to install a new culvert on Fairfield Avenue, and we're we're in the process of doing that. Dan, we have somebody that's trying to get in. So we're gonna be doing that, and then the we have a small cities Fairfield Avenue. It's the last one on the list that is going to be. So basically, we have to do the culvert. It's right past the railroad tracks between Duquesne on Fairfield Avenue. So we gotta do the culvert first, and then we're gonna do the we're gonna do the paving project, and then we can tie that Y Y and S stormwater project through. So without if we put the stormwater first, the flows won't work properly, so. But we have a we have a team in place to do this. You know, we'll just pick them off one at a time. This is not meant to overwhelm us, but I keep telling myself that. But we, no, we have a good team, and we'll just we'll keep doing, you know, going getting through it. You know, to look back at two thousand and twenty five or two thousand and twenty four, you know, we had that. You'll you'll see some of the projects that we did, so we we had a lot done in two thousand and twenty four, too. Okay, Dan? That's C A C R A. It's a new, you know, new data that we just kind of ran through. It did. We have it projected because some of the the numbers aren't quite in or the projects haven't been completed yet. But since its inception, we've had two hundred and eighty seven residential units come in, estimating about seventy million dollars investment from the residents building the homes. And then the commercial C R A in the queue is about eighty million. And it's pretty significant for a small community like ours. It's good. Stormwater, we talked about, we've been talking about stormwater since the sixties. And in two thousand and twelve, you know, to tell the story that we kind of prioritized our our stormwater. It's kind of got the top ten going there, and we've got two of them finished and four in queue to complete, and we're working on those. That Lisbon Railroad Street, that West Railroad Street is a project that I talked about a few slides ago that Jobs Ohio gave us a million dollars. Basically, we leveraged the Compco's investment. So that's going to kind of address the stormwater in that area, even though we did make some improvements down there when we paved just with that Lisbon Street project. We did install some storm lines in there to beef that up, but, you know, the road road down there at West Railroad is terrible, and we appreciate everybody's patience on that, and we're gonna continue through that, so. Community service, we could spend probably all night on on all the community service that takes place in our community. It's great. We got a photo here of the chamber and the tourism through appreciation breakfast for the Joy Christmas. People putting up in the in the city workers, and this was out at Sweet Melissa's, and it was a really nice, really nice event. And we're hoping she opens for breakfast because the food was really good, so. Okay, go ahead, Dan. Collaboration, we've been talking about collaborating with a lot of folks for the last ten years. It's been important, whether it's county level or city level. Just kind of giving you an update, we've worked with City Warren over the years, and they've they've adopted Dora, City of Youngstown, just recently did. We've been working with East Palestine over the last, well, since the since the train accident, we've been really focusing on that. Village of Sebring, kind of a neat story. They needed some help over there, and our our employees went over there and and helped on the weekends, which was very nice of them to do that. Just helping out another community. Lake the River, that is, so I mentioned Jobs Ohio and Team Neo is the one that brought our recent money in from Jobs Ohio, but Lake the River is our new representative, and we've developed in a relationship with them, and they've they're really showing up, so that's that's nice. Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, been going to a lot of meetings and and places with them. And that 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 photo down there was actually, I believe that one was taken in D C when we did the fly-in. Okay, Dan? Yeah, the upper left one was a drive-in down in, so this is the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. They had a drive-in at the state, and we went down there, and there's a lot of community leaders that attended that. And we actually went through the State House and during that tour saw Monica Blaisdale there, so that was pretty cool. The bottom one is the the mayor is very familiar with this bottom one. It's the mayor's group that meets would try to meet monthly. This was one of the bigger meetings. Not exactly sure, but this is the Morning Journal covered this this actual project and point out that Mayor Tarbet from from Minerva's in the far right there, he passed away this last year. See, I think during the state state visit for the drive-in, Mark Lamontia was the keynote speaker, and he introduced the, or excuse me, he introduced keynote speaker. And he was very active in Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. And then lower left, we have Roberta from R Cap was actually honored in our at our awards banquet for the chamber. And then we were invited to Lake the River announcement when the governor came to Warren. Okay. Fix the Sticks, you know, they've been doing a great, great job on the project out there at the cemetery. They raised about fifty thousand dollars last year, and this was a really fun event. It was the pizza tasting event and very successful and and, you know, it was a very electric in there. Everybody was excited to be there. This is a slide that we took. Actually, Bryce went down to the Main Street Al Conference and learned a lot down there, and we we should have him do his full spiel on this. But there's another Columbiana in in the U S, and it's in Alabama. And he got to visit that. He's got to stand there in front of the the mural there. Kind of a neat story. I don't want to take all of his stories there when he gives the overview of the presentation, but the if you see that tree in the right there, there's it looks like there's a like a sculpture in it. You see that? Well, one of the local areas, where was that at? Mont Velo, Alabama. So they came to the park and they just started seeing people carving stuff into the trees, and they had to investigate, figure out who it was, and they figured it out, and he thought he was in trouble, and they said, no, we really like it. Keep doing it. But the crazy thing is, is the guy's name is Tim Tingle. You can't make that stuff up, so. Kind of cool. Very good. The Hub, we got that back together. That's where the City of Columbiana, the Area Chamber of Commerce, Tourism, and now the Columbiana Arts Theater, we meet once a month. We want to make sure that we're doing stuff, you know, together and not, you know, not against each other. You know, if somebody's gonna be developing a a project that we want to be able to support it and not not work against it and make sure all those ores are running in one direction, and it's it's went really well. The collaboration and communication is really good. You know, we've we've always had a great relationship with the the Chamber and Tourism, but it's it's really important to have that communication because so many times that we get a lead, whether it's biggest one that I can think of is the day that A B L called, and they were looking for a place. And and this was clear back in February. It was February I think it was February nineteen, and Chamber got a call. And it was A B L, and they wanted to move to town, and six months later, they were here, so it's great. Youth Engagement, we've been really focusing on this. We had the Youth Engage or Music on Main where the tourism kind of sponsored that with the unveiling of the the projects that Entrepreneur Class did. We point out the Schmitz Plaza there, that Entrepreneur Class, you know, made those recommendations to that and made the recommendations to change the signs, and they they implemented on that. So it's a nice project, and there's Garen and Rebecca from the youth representatives from from council last year, and they they were very active, and they worked with actually Bryce on this Music on Main event. And the event was very successful. People hung around, and it was nice, so. A couple of the other community events, we got the street fair, of course, Christmas Parade. We, there's our electric department. They got the Griswold Award again this year. They really did did a great job. We're really, really proud of them. And then the Witch Walk was, for those of you that weren't there, you can see there's a lot of people there. Worked out really well. Christmas Parade got a little rained out this year, but people still showed up. That was, and they were troopers. Okay? One of the proclamations, I believe it was Tom Makeel Day, right at the Wine Fest, and the mayor went out there and presented it to Tom, and, you know, Makeel's been, you know, huge, made a huge and positive impact to our community. And they they're great supporters of the community and the and the Wine Fest. And always, Tom Makeel's always saying, for the good of Columbiana, and that's that's what we're all here for, so. One of the events, Chalk on Main. Another kind of a cool event, and actually you can see the the murals in the background. And though that's not my grandson there on the lower right, that is is my piece of art that I did, and it was really fun. I did it because he loved Elmo, or he loves Elmo, so kind of cool. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Center picture there, Willie Mays?
Yes.
The the guy or lady, I'm not sure which.
It was a guy.
Painted that. He had died just a few days before, and they totally revamped what they were gonna do to make that Willie Mays.
Yeah, very cool. Yeah, so that was Eric Greenwald that did the middle one, and he is from Pittsburgh and is a sports fanatic, so. It's kind of cool one. This is a swim meet, so I've never been to a swim meet, and it's kind of cool to see what one looks like. You can see the tents. They go clear down almost to the ticket booth, it looks like. I mean, there's there's a lot of them, and it looks like Mark has been to a few of them. Been there, done that. Okay. So we opened up a new section in the cemetery. A couple departments worked on that, and it's, you know, really we had just it felt like we just opened up another section, but I guess we filled it with COVID. But I did open up the new section H there. Okay. Worked on Mirror Lake Pavilion. They're putting restrooms in. They they've got a they're using Tourism donated twenty thousand dollars, and they're using that to upgrade the restroom. So it'd be restrooms on the inside of the pavilion, and then the ones that are on the So it'll be restrooms on the inside of the pavilion and then the ones that are on the outside now will be uh, come public for the pickleball players. Water department, just uh, they're putting some new valves in and uh, line extensions. Okay? This is our um, own a farm down on Crestview Road and that's where we're putting the well sites and piping uh, for that, that uh, large project of raw water line and uh, we're, we're going through that right now. So where we're looking at now, we'll have a road access and uh, a couple wells out there. Just had to replace a damaged valve on uh, West Park. Installing a curb shut off there, back timber line drive. Okay? Putting a new hydrant in. Go ahead. Now the street department, we're back in the cemetery um, in section H, the street department um, very talented and they were able to uh, pave that and uh, save the city a lot of money by, by being able to do it by ourselves and uh, it is, you know, when we're paving, it's all hands on deck. All the departments help and uh, it's kind of a, kind of a cool thing to, to see, but um, you know, we saw the before pictures. It was just grass and now it's a, now it's a road. Go ahead. It's Duquesne Street uh, sidewalk that's on the north side. And that far left is actually kind of looking southwest and that's coming up along to Duquesne. Our backs are uh, towards uh, the high school. We're looking southwest. And then um, that bridge was um, delivered and then they poured the uh, the deck on the, on it and uh, you haven't seen that. It's a pretty nice um, pretty nice sidewalk and nice bridge. Go ahead. Street, uh, Lisbon Street, uh, you can see where we're doing the uh, underpass, which is needed to be done for a long time. We're happening to get that done. Uh, now we did uh, contract that out, um, and this was part of the Fairfield School Road project and Lisbon Street were the same project. Okay? This has been out there, so this is basically at the Y from Fairfield Avenue uh, where Fairfield School splits off all the way out to um, city limits. A big project and you know, there's a lot of orange barrels and, and we appreciate everybody's patience on that project. Okay? Kind of a collaboration with uh, Fairfield Township and YNS. Uh, this is a, this is a, a crossing, Bryce, did you say this might be? Kelly Park Road, so you need to have all three, three there to uh, help you get through that. You have to, once you get it paved, you have to make sure it works, so they got the engine with um, you know, no cars on it, so uh, make sure it works. Okay? Um, Mother Nature took a bunch of signs down during that one storm, the sheer winds that came through and uh, knocked down our um, our sign and as well as a few to the west there, but uh, our crew is very talented and um, and uh, I believe uh, Dan uh, Luan might have helped out on that one, so. Um, yeah, yeah, definitely. But um, to get that up, back up, um, I mean, it took a little while, but uh, got it, got it done. These are uh, influence pumps at the wastewater treatment and it was a pretty big project. Actually had to build that stand there to uh, pick up the motors and such and rebuild the pumps. Okay? This, this uh, is a, the drain, tank drain lift station and it is um, about forty feet deep and there were two pumps down in there and basically we had a kind of a, I don't know, a perfect storm, if you will, and, and uh, two pumps went out at the same time. Well, that makes it very difficult to, to work on them when you can't get down there, so we actually had to rent a uh, a unit that uh, temporarily to get us uh, through that, that time. Okay? Our um, as I said, our, our, our crews are very talented. Uh, we have a two thousand and four backhaul that I'm always telling you that we're out using. Well, um, the tank, it's a, it's a, it's a big, basically a tanker truck, but the tank was starting to leak and um, our crews uh, went down the, can't remember if they, where they went to get it bent. I think maybe Oaks Welding, but um, took a flat piece of steel and, and uh, shaped it like that and welded it back together and it's uh, it's like new now. It's probably better than new because it's probably a thicker gauge than what was in there before, but. We had a couple valves uh, go on the, one of our uh, tanks, um, and we had dig pretty deep hole, probably, I don't know, eighteen feet deep. Get down there and change that. It was a big project, okay? Uh, the electric department had to come out to the water tower and help, um, uh, I believe they were out there with the chief uh, working on some stuff and um, far right, um, couldn't really tell what the picture was, um, till you look really close. There are two people up on that, on, on that uh, utility pole and they climbed up there. Sometimes you're out in the middle of a yard or something. You can't get anything out there. So they had to, they had to put these spikes on. They climb right up the, some of them climb up faster than I could walk it, I think, so. Go ahead. Uh, kind of a cool thing, the um, electric department goes to West Branch High School for like a career day and um, you know, they get to, get to spend some time with our trucks and um, it's, it's great that West Branch does that and it's great that um, our folks want to go out there and, and um, you know, are always looking for uh, for new workers, so maybe they can get one someday from, from high school. Go ahead. Had a lot of swearing ends. Uh, you were all sitting here when those happened. Okay? And then uh, safety forces were honored, um, by the Chamber of Commerce uh, at their awards banquet, great banquet. Was it just a, a great, great evening and uh, you know, the chiefs were out there and the EMS and, and uh, police and fire were all there, so it was uh, great and Monica Blaisdale showed up, um. It's a really nice event. Although I am glad we didn't have an emergency at that time. Of course, we were all here, so I guess, but, you go ahead. And that's it. So we got uh, um, this lady's from, can't remember her last name. What's her first name? Monique, uh, she was from the governor's office. We met her uh, one of the chamber events and she came out, visited the mayor. Bryce and I uh, got to show her the um, youth project, so. So that is the twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's kind of fun to do. It is uh, Yeah, appreciate that. Um, I want to thank Bryce for all his work on that. Usually I'm the one that's putting all these slides together and he uh, he did the lion's share this, this year, so I, I appreciate that, so. So that's, that's everything that I've got except for, um, you know, next year's presentation is gonna, you know, say that, you know, this last year's presentation that we just did, we named uh, a new finance director and we, we uh, appointed Bryce, but uh, I'm sad to say that we're going to be uh, we're going to be um, announcing a new uh, police chief next year on, on uh, so um, Chief Myers is um, told us that he's going to be retiring in uh, April. So uh, we're going to be uh, advertising for that uh, start tomorrow, so. Pretty tough. We're going to miss you.
Just got him trained for.
Yeah, Chief, we all uh, really appreciated all the work you did here and uh, I'll tell you what, you didn't have to guess what he thought about something. Uh, the chief was direct and told us exactly how we felt about situations and that's exactly the way it should be. And uh, we needed to know the facts and he didn't try to uh, cover them over. He tried to tell us exactly what we need to do. And with the growing community and we all know that there's more traffic and more congestion and more people and our police departments really had to react to, you know, become very effective, so. Chief, we will miss you.
If you want to sugarcoat something, go get a donut.
Yeah. Any other comments about the twenty-four report? Thank you Lance for putting that together and like give us a little history and um, the amount of money that um, our administration brings in that does not cost our taxpayers directly to have to pay for some of these projects. It's really significant and very effective and appreciative and so um, I think especially like that stormwater project. I mean, boy, when I first started getting involved with the city, we had the room full of people that had their basements flooded. And uh, they're not here tonight because their basements aren't flooded because we tried to react to those stormwater projects. We started out with thirteen and I think you can see most of those we've, we've dealt with, so. That's great. All right, um, back to the agenda. Uh, you all received a copy of the mayor's court yearly report for twenty twenty-four. And uh, I also want to comment that there's, we're going to need to deal with a motion regarding a letter we received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new C-two liquor license for Family Dollar Stores of Ohio LLC doing businesses, Family Dollar, twenty-seven, one twenty-nine, comma, one, 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 two, Village Plaza, Columbian, Ohio, four, 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 oh, eight. We will be dealing with that later in the agenda.
No, I think we're doing it now.
Oh, we're going to do, oh, okay. So this is, I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, normally, um, unless we want to hold a public hearing, correct? Uh, we usually vote if we want to and it has not been our history here to ask uh, to approve that, so I guess I, at this point, I would entertain a motion that I just uh, laid out there.
So move.
Uh, I think we need to add, so the motion is to request a public hearing at the county seat?
Yes.
If a motion is second, I've got a question.
Okay, so we've got that corrected? Okay, go ahead.
Well, that's, that's an old dollar store. Why are they just asking now for? Liquor from?
Family doll, I think it's the Family Dollar store that's in the Village Plaza right now.
Yeah, so.
That's what I mean. It's an old store.
Right.
They're just applying for it now.
Correct. Yeah, so they.
No, it's not the new Dollar Tree.
So as a point of clarification, so everybody understands this motion second, this is if we want to request a public hearing. Correct? Just want to make that clear. Okay? Any other questions on the motion? Dan, we call the roll.
Souter?
No.
D'Attilio?
No.
Liston?
No.
Graham?
No.
Banner?
No.
Thank you for that vote. Uh, you also received a copy of the bill list for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Are any questions or comments on the bill list? Hearing none, we have no old business and we will now move to new business. I would entertain a motion to appoint a candidate to the open seat on city council, unexpired term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I move. Second. Okay, so there's motion. I'm sorry, I spoke. Uh, we have a motion of second. Correct?
Yes, we do.
We should probably clarify that, I don't, you didn't get that far. The swing in will take place at the next meeting.
Yeah, it will not take place tonight. I didn't feel need to be left in the motion, but.
Great, that's good.
You know, um, it will take place at the next meeting on February fourth. Okay, uh, we have four candidates which we've introduced earlier, so at this point, did we vote on the motion yet?
We will vote, um, and when I call your name for roll call, then you would state who you were voting for to fill the council vacancy. D'Attilio?
Uh, Robert Cato.
Liston?
Robert.
Graham?
Robert Cato.
Yeah, excuse me. There's two Roberts.
Yeah, Robert Cato.
Cato, okay. Thank you. Banner?
Robert Cato.
Souter?
Robert Cato.
It's unanimous.
Okay, Robert Cato. Uh, you've been duly elected, appointed to the, to the seat. The council seat. You're thankful for being here.
With that appointment, Mr. Mayor, I think now we'll have to appoint somebody for a planning commission seat.
Yeah, because Robert was on the planning commission, is on the planning commission. And he'll probably have to resign, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Robert, you can't be on both. We can't do that now.
No, I, I think we have to do the same thing, person that enters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do letters of interest, um, I'm just looking at the timing on that one, um.
If we could do it at the next meeting, that way you have a commission for next month.
Yeah, it'd be really quick though, um. You want to accept letters until Thursday, end of business on January thirtieth? Do it. And point uh, somebody on the fourth in time for the eleventh meeting.
Hey, I would just like to interject a comment that I, I just want to say that I think it's a real great thing that we had great candidates apply for this position. We're very lucky to have good candidates. They were all very good candidates, in my opinion. Would have served the city well, so I, I just want to make that statement, especially those of you that came tonight and um, and we're here and we appreciate your interest in the city of Columbiana. It means a lot to us. All right. Thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Columbiana and municipal attorney Mark Hudson.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion? Dan, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm going to turn, I'm going to defer to Dan here for the next item.
Um, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the request from the Fairfield Ruhringtons Club to hold their annual antique car show on Sunday, June, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-five from noon to four PM on South Main Street, pending receipt of the completed application and approval by the department heads.
So you made a motion. I'll second that motion.
We got a motion of second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just, I, I will throw in, um, Just, I, I'm gonna throw in, um, normally we require the application before we even vote on it. This being the Ruhrer Tans, we've been hosting this car show for literally forever, I think, so. Um, I'm pretty comfortable that they're uh, they're gonna do the right thing and just, um, would you have to have the application is also. I think we're, I'm comfortable with approving it as is and then letting them get the application to us.
Dan, we call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinances by title only.
So move. Second.
Dan, we call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three, two, seven, three, first reading. An ordinance per, to permit lateral hires within the Police Department of the City of Columbia.
So.
Second.
Motion second, any questions on the motion?
Who made the motion?
Ted, you got in first.
And these are first readings, so should they be twenty-five and not twenty-four?
Oh, that's a good question.
Shouldn't these motions be? Ordinance twenty-five instead of twenty-four?
Is not attached, um, obviously, it should be attached to this. I'm gonna recommend that we take no action on this, that we make sure that Exhibit A, which basically, the purpose of this. Is to allow, my voice might give out. Purpose of this um, is basically to allow lateral hires within the Police Department. The exhibit, which doesn't seem to be attached, explains how that will work. The same language has been recently adopted as part of our Civil Service Commission rules. So the thought was to have the language in front of council also and legislation and also in the civil service rules.
So we're gonna.
So then do we have to table this?
It's basically for the Police Department, to allow someone that already has taken a civil service exam. To qualify for a hire into this department. Am I stating that correctly, Chief?
So first thing, should these be twenty-five instead of twenty-four? Or is the ordinance number, should it maybe twenty-five instead of twenty-four?
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's, I don't number them, but I would agree it should actually have a twenty-five dash O on it.
Yeah, a lot of these were, we were trying to get.
Good to February, yeah.
Or September, you know, whatever, right?
Some of them say twenty-four on the actual ordinance, but the agenda all says twenty-four, so we'll make sure Rebecca. Has everything in order, I'm sure she will.
So for this one, because the ordinance number is wrong, do we table it or we, we could vote no on it and?
I actually, although it's, it's labeled in here twenty-five, Exhibit A isn't attached and I want you all to see Exhibit A. Um, so I would say let's table this until the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So we're voting to table?
Yes.
We've already got a motion.
Okay, so we're voting to table the motion. Uh, here's my quick question, should we identify it as, even though we're tabling it, do we change that to twenty-five dash? They'll all be changed, so that should read twenty-five O three, two, seven, three, and we're, so there's a motion to tape. Again, motion second?
Yes.
Okay, you have it, okay, um. Dan, we call the roll?
This is to table, Souter?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash O dash three, two, seven, four, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Herbert Rowland and Grubik, Inc., H R G. Consolving engineers, engineers, for the purpose of providing design engineering services. For the Cole Farstone Park Project, E I D, one, two, one, nine, nine, zero. So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussions on that motion? Dan, we call the roll?
Tutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash O dash three, two, seven, five, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three, two, two, eight. Establishing wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees of the City of Columbia.
So move.
Second. You guys couldn't have timed that better, right? Serious. Any questions on the motion? Dan, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash O dash three, two, seven, six, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three, two, one, one, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees of the Firestone Pool. For the City of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any questions on the motion? Dan, we call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, um, we've completed all of the uh, whole business. Um, now moving to um. I mean, new business, excuse me, uh, I'm moving now to the part of the agenda where we give an opportunity for public comment. So those of you who've sat out there patiently and quiet for the whole night, uh, if you, any of you have anything that you would love to say. Uh, we welcome your thoughts or comments. Everybody's okay with not speaking? Very good, now I'll turn to the council and ask if there are any council comments.
I'd like to comment on your comment about the, the letters that we got for the council seat. They really were, I was impressed, all four, I thought were very decent candidates. Just keep us in mind when anything else comes up. Yeah, we appreciate it.
We do have a planning commission seat opened up, so.
That's a good point, Ted. Any other uh, comments anyone would like to make? Okay, well, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.